Buenas, en hafa de colleagues. Legislatura's back in session. We are on second reading. Senator Nelson, Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion that we go back to motions.
On the motion to return to motions, is there any objection?
Notwithstanding the House rules that we go back to motion.
On the motion, is there any objection? Hearing no objection. Motion carries. We are back in motions. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to place Resolution Number 42-36 into session agenda. Resolution 42-36 COR.
On the motion to place Resolution Number 42-36 COR on the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Oh, can you read the title, please, Senator?
Thank you. Resolution Number 42-36 COR is relative to expressing the support of Imanay Trentaisize Nala Sator Guam for the passage of H.R. 265, the Insular Area Medicaid Parity Act introduced by the Honorable Delegate Gregorio Calili Camacho Sablon, and co-sponsored by the Honorable Delegate Michael F.Q. Siniklis, which eliminates the general Medicaid funding limitations for U.S. territories and to further support the protection of access to health care and the federal funding that ensures the necessary resources for Medicaid programs benefiting the people of Guam and all U.S. territories.
On the motion to place that resolution on the second reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Are there any other motions? If not, then we are in the second reading file. And Majority Leader Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to place Resolution Number 42-36 COR into the third reading file and discuss.
Please proceed.
Sijis Massey, Madam Speaker. Resolution Number 42-36 COR is relative to expressing the support of Imanay Trentaisize Nala Sator Guam for the passage of H.R. 265, the Insular Area Medicaid Parity Act introduced by the Honorable Delegate Gregorio Calili Camacho Sablon and the Honorable Delegate Michael F.Q. Siniklis, which eliminates the general Medicaid funding limitations for U.S. territories and to further support the protection of access to health care and the federal funding that ensures the necessary resources for Medicaid programs benefiting the people of Guam and all U.S. territories. The importance of protecting access to health care for the people of Guam and to fight and advocate for appropriate federal funding for Medicaid, knowing that Medicaid is the largest source of public health insurance in the nation. Over 40,000 Guam residents have benefited from Medicaid in 2021. That's nearly one-fifth of our island's population, and the number will only increase with the addition of COFA citizens. Guam is the only U.S. territory that offers all mandatory benefits of Medicaid. However, we only have access to federal dollars that are not to exceed the annual mandatory ceiling amount, which has proven insufficient to our pre-existing and rising health concerns. These concerns include shortages in health care professionals, unsafe hospital infrastructure, and ongoing patient debt. Currently, the federal government provided 55% of funding to our Medicaid program, which is only 5% above their statutory minimum. And Guam is required to meet the 45% local matching percentage, which is already a challenge in itself. In H.R. 265, the Insular Area Medicaid Parity Act would eliminate the federal funding cap for the territories, which is a step in the right direction. But little will change if we do not address the shortfall of the Medicaid's funding formula. The Federal Medical Assistance Percentage Formula, or FMAP, which has not changed since Medicaid was first created in 1965. FMAPs are calculated by comparing a state's per capita income to the U.S. per capita income, with a statutory minimum of 50% and a maximum of 83% for states and maximum of 55% for territories. This means that the federal funds cover a larger portion of medical expenditures to states with low PCIs and smaller portion to states with high PCIs. The U.S. Government Accountability Office found this formula to be an incomplete measure and a faulty indicator of a state or a territory's need for medical assistance. Under the FMAP, for example, two states with similar PCIs but vastly different numbers of low-income residents would receive the same allocation of funds. For example, as reported in the GAO, states like Wisconsin receive a relatively high federal matching rate despite its relatively high ability to fund program services, whereas states like California receive a low federal matching rate despite its relatively low ability to fund program services. With the addition of federal matching aid, Wisconsin is unable to spend more than twice what California is able to spend per person in poverty. In several reports, GAO proposed an alternative formula that would take into account a state's economic standing, geographic difference, and its demand for services and resources. Such measures can be combined in various ways that are unique to the community they are serving and would provide a more equitable method of allocation of federal funds. It stands to reason that not only does the federal funding cap need to be eliminated, but the current funding formula, as discussed in the public hearing of the resolution, needs to be readdressed. There are studies and solutions and the necessary steps to support implementation of the legislation. Madam Speaker, I do want to state that during COVID-19, we did have an increase in our federal matching aid, which was at 83%, I believe. And so now, with this new act, as we come into 2022, the question is, are we going to sustain this federal matching aid? Or will it decrease and go back to its regular statutory requirement, as is proposed, which is 55% that we have received in the past? And so this is part of the H.R. 265, which is with the intention of lifting that cap of the federal matching program. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the resolution? Would anyone like to be recognized on the resolution? If not, then Senator Nelson, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And just to perhaps give a broader understanding of this, this legislation, H.R. 265, was introduced on Monday, January 11, 2021, by Congressman Calili Sablon, which was referred to the Subcommittee on Health on Tuesday, February 2, 2021. And we have yet to have a hearing on this resolution. And this resolution supports the H.R. 265 with the Insular Area Medicaid Parity Act. Furthermore, residents of all five territories will be impacted from this legislation, which include Guam, CNMI, U.S. Virgin Islands, Puerto Rico, and American Samoa. Those that are eligible for the criteria is met with elderly adults, adults with incomes below 133% of local poverty level, children and pregnant women through the CHIP Extension Program, persons with disabilities, and compact or free association citizens. And to note, Guam is the only territory that provides all mandatory benefits of Medicaid, and DPHSS oversees the Medicaid program. This is important because the Act seeks to amend Title 11 of the Social Security Act that limits federal funding for territories and seeks to eliminate the funding cap. Over 40,000 residents from Guam have benefited from Medicaid in 2021. Without increased federal funding, our uninsured population will continue to struggle to acquire adequate and affordable care, and our hospital will continue to face financial hardship. The shortage on local match may deter both on-island and off-island providers from accepting Medicaid patients risking the lives of the recipients that may result in more expensive medical treatment. As patients tend to wait until their condition worsens and are forced to seek treatment in the hospital emergency room, which may necessitate hospital inpatient admission. And here's also the challenge for our hospital. Studies have that if territories were not statutory limited to a 55% FMAP score, that many of them would have reached 83% statutory maximum outlined in the SSA. And so, Madam Speaker, I hope my colleagues will support this resolution. It is a good move forward. However, there's much work to be done, especially when addressing the FMAP formula, which is really the challenge for all states and the territories. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to place Resolution Number 42-36 on the third reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Speaker Theresa Lai, I will acknowledge you at this time. Please proceed. Good morning.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 51-36 COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, which is authored by myself and co-sponsored by both the Vice Chairman, Senator Sabina Perez, and Senator Talina Nelson, which is an act relative to the authorization for the use of real property within the administrative jurisdiction of the Guam Waterworks Authority for the construction and maintenance of soccer fields and related facilities. I would like to speak on this motion, and I'd like to move it to be placed into the third reading file.
Please proceed, Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. The Bill 51-36, as introduced, was adapted from a draft agreement previously negotiated and agreed to by the parties, the Guam Football Association, commonly known as the Soccer Association, but Guam Football Association, Guam Waterworks, and Guam Department of Education. So GWA, they have administrative jurisdiction over Lot 3396 in Ordat Chalampago, which is currently in the process of being parceled out as separate lots for GWE and GDOE. The Ordat Chalampago Elementary School is located partially on Lot 3396. And so that's why GWA is parceling it out between them and GDOE. Of course, this Ordat Elementary School is in Ordat, and it's not too far from Agada Johnston, and that's going to be relevant in a little while, Madam Speaker. The Guam Football Association seeks to enter into a memorandum of agreement relating to the use of GDOE's portion of the lot for the construction and maintenance of a FIFA-funded soccer facility with two full-size soccer fields. FIFA funding guidelines require that land registries have to be made for a minimum period of 20 years before they invest. And due to the regular course of funding cycles and construction on the proposed fields, the Guam Football Association and FIFA have requested support for a 30-year land lease, especially under the COVID-19 situation. So Guam Waterworks, and Guam Department of Education, and the Guam Football Association have negotiated this draft MOU. They are in agreement with the terms of the usage, and they concur on the amended terms as provided in our bill. The Guam Football Association, according to the audit that we were provided, had a clean record of compliance and is expected to have a similar outcome by FIFA officials, who acknowledged good governance and a sound finance and accounting system implemented by GFA. I think we can all recognize the strides that the Guam Football Association has made in growing the sport of soccer in Guam for both our youth and our adults. In some cases, our youth have gone on to excel in the sport with the support and training under the GFA umbrella. I think we can also recognize and appreciate that building these types of athletic facilities can be challenging in our villages, as well as our schools, yet still acknowledge the positive impact that they have on our communities. At my urging and in an effort to get the best value for the use of the 1.29 acres for the schoolchildren who will be adjacent to this soccer field, we were able to negotiate use of the facility not only for the nearby GDOE schools, but also for inter-scholastic activity. After the bill was introduced, GFA reached out to the committee to advise that based on the facility plans, the property size indicated in the bill needed to be adjusted to 5213.53 plus or minus square meters. So that's one of the amendments that was made in the committee. GWA had no objection to the proposed legislation. They support the arrangement proposed in the bill, as well as the potential benefit to GDOE students and the island soccer community. GWA deferred to GFA on the amended size of the portion of the lot designated for the facilities, since that portion is reverting to GDOE. GDOE Superintendent has agreed to all the proposed terms of usage on the bill as amended to include the amended size of the designated portion for GFA facilities. And all of these memos between these agencies are included in the committee report. The Ordat Chalampago Municipal Planning Council adopted Resolution 2021-01, which supports the intent of Bill 51, but addressed two main concerns. The first concern is the size of the property on the bill as introduced is different from the size of the GFA site development plan. And this has been adjusted in the bill, as explained earlier. The second concern, addressed by the Chalampago Municipal Planning Council, is that the public easements associated with GFA's adjacent Lot 3416-R2, this is not the subject of the bill, but an adjacent lot, has not been properly surveyed and recorded as illegal rights-of-way along the northern boundary of Lot 3416-R2 and is currently in use as a section of Ramirez Drive, Ordat. Though this issue is not on the subject property of Bill 51-36, the GFA has committed to finding a resolution. In fact, that's why this bill was passed on file earlier, Madam Speaker, and that is because further discussions between GFA and the Department of Land Management have occurred as recent as yesterday. So they continue to discuss this matter once it was raised by the Municipal Planning Council in Ordat Chalampago. And I'm satisfied yesterday that they've come to a resolution. And GFA has agreed, in fact, to resolve part of the rights-of-way issue by just deeding the property to the government of Guam. Apparently, it's a longstanding issue that just should have been addressed prior to the sale of this property. And so it's one of those things, no one's fault. It was just not included when they did the earlier transaction, when GFA bought this property. And so they're going to do what is necessary. They've committed to that. They've committed to the mayor of Ordat Chalampago that they are going to do that. And the mayor has expressed to me that, of course, we are looking forward to them keeping their word. But again, this property that we are discussing easements, it's adjacent to, but it's not the subject property that we are discussing here. So it looks to me that if they do what they have committed to, easement issues on Ramirez Drive will be addressed separately, and that they have committed to that. And as to this bill, this property, subject of the bill, there are no easement issues. All right, so Bill 51 was also amended to incorporate the technical suggestions of the legislature's legal bureau and some of the feedback at the public hearing. This includes provisions to provide flexibility for GDOE to include charter schools, use of the facility, and to negotiate usage of the facilities for inter-scholastic activities as needed. A waiver for appraisals was included because the license fee is set at only $1 in exchange for in-kind services to GDOE and uses of the soccer fields and related facilities by the students. At this time, I'd like to make a couple motions to amend the bill. One would be to add sponsors. So the sponsors were, of course, Oversight Chairs of GDOE and Oversight Chairs of GWA. And so I would also like to add two co-sponsors who had requested at the public hearing. That would be Senator Chris Duñez and Senator Frank Blas. So that would be my first motion, Madam Speaker. Floor amendment, and it's been uploaded.
On that motion, are there any objections? Oy, sorry. Hearing no objections, I apologize. Motion carries. Speaker, here's to work then.
Thank you. All right, and another amendment is to strike Section 7 of the bill, which I added in committee, trying to resolve this easement issue. Since, I would like to just strike this section of the bill, since GFA has agreed to deed property to the government of Guam, is surveying that property, and is shouldering the cost to survey it and to take care of that separate easement issue on a separate parcel of land, not covered by this bill. That would be my second amendment, to delete Section 7.
On that motion to delete Section 7, are there anyone wishing to speak? Are there any objections? Senator Joanne Brown, I recognize you on that.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to ask a sponsor. I should have asked this at the public hearing. I do have familiarity of where this lot is located in Ordat Chalampago. But I did want to ask with regards to the bus substation, since the jurisdiction's being transferred over to this organization, how is that going to be impacted? Because if you look at where the Ordat Elementary School is to the left of that facility, you're facing the front of the school. To the immediate left is the substation for the buses, and then you have this big field behind there, a natural field of grass, and then a lot of trees that are on the periphery of that. So I just wanted to ask, how would that impact if at all? Or is that going to be required to be relocated? Or what accommodations of any impact with regards to the bus substation?
Speaker, would you like to answer?
Did you say substation, GWA substation?
No, no, no. The substation for the DPW buses that are parked there.
Okay. I drove to this area. I did not see the DPW buses, but...
It's to the left of the school. If you're facing the front of Ordat Chalampago Elementary School, it's to your immediate left.
Okay, then if that's currently being used by GDOE, that's, I'm going to guess, included in GDOE's portion of the property that they're parceling out now. So GWA facilities will remain in place, and GDOE, whatever they're currently using, is not going to be impacted at all. So I'm guessing that if it's adjacent to the school, that it's the GDOE property that they have allowed DPW to use for the school buses.
Okay, so as far as sponsors aware, then there'll be no impact to the substation there for the school buses?
No, not at all.
Okay, I appreciate it. I just want to get clarification on that, because it is referenced.
The property that they've shown us right now currently has no use on it at all.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Anyone else on the amendment? Are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. On the main motion, Senator Duñez, you are allowed to speak. Please proceed.
Sijis Massey, Madam Speaker. And I would like to rise in full support of Bill 51-36 and thank the author, Speaker Lai, for adding me as the co-sponsor. Madam Speaker, as I discussed earlier on another bill by Senator Ada that, you know, will give opportunities for tax breaks and tax credits to be used, you know, for municipal projects with the mayor's council. And of course, we have such great ideas in this particular session. And I brought up Bill 51 during that time because, as we all know, the Guam Football Association, particularly in association with FIFA, has a great abundance of resources. And I want to take this time to thank Tino Sangil and his team, and really everybody who's ever been a member of GFA on Guam. Every time I pass by that field in Dededo, I just exude with pride. The facility is always so well-maintained. The parking lot, the lighting, the bleachers. We've had professional football players come to Guam, Madam Speaker. The recognition that the Guam Football Association has brought to Guam is something that every single one of us on this island should be so proud of. I also just am so encouraged by the fact that they didn't just take that crown jewel that they have in Dededo and rest on their laurels. They've come several times to this legislature, Madam Speaker, to ask for property that would be available and set aside in southern Guam, in Aggett and other areas. Now, Ordat Chalampago. And I want to thank the Guam Waterworks Authority and their team for just basically seeing the wisdom and the understanding to provide this expanded opportunity for our young people, Madam Speaker. Once again, we're finding a lot of great things to be so excited about in this particular session. Madam Speaker, we've seen of late some of our young people graduating and going off to college on full scholarships for the sport of rugby. I saw on my Facebook page today an individual that I believe is playing professionally now in rugby, from Seattle, one of my relatives congratulating. These sports like rugby and soccer, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, and I hearken back to my Department of Youth Affairs days. I remember so many parents that would come to us that wanted to have their children involved in sports, but didn't have the means. And a lot of times, some of our social workers would say, "Get them into soccer. Get them into football, because we can get t-shirts and shorts and cleats, and they can get out on the field and play." Because we know that sports like my favorite sport, American-style football, you got your helmet, your shoulder pads. Sometimes it could cost a couple hundred bucks to outfit a kid to be able to play that sport. Beautiful sport, though, too. And I thank all of those volunteers who have kept those leagues alive over the years. But this sport, Madam Speaker, is one of those where a t-shirt, a pair of shorts, some cleats, and just great coaching, and a lot of love and sunshine, even in rain, they play and they play and they play until their hearts content. In closing, Madam Speaker, I've had a chance to have great coaches over my time in life. I've always loved sports, particularly contact sports, including wrestling. But a really, really strong mentor of mine, I didn't like soccer, because it's a lot of running. As you can see by my figure, I'm not much of a runner. But he told me, he said, "You know, Chris, get involved in soccer, because once you learn footwork, you can do any other sport. It's the coordination of your feet..." And I'm going off subject here, but I just wanted to take this opportunity. "It's the coordination of your feet that really give you all of that... It's the coordination of your feet that really give you all of that other ability as you develop, if you want to keep getting involved in sports. It's the best thing you can get a young person to do, even if they're not going to continue. If they do soccer for a year or two, every other sport will be so much further enhanced. I know they call it football, because that's the international recognition soccer, soccer football. But that's just one little more important thing, Madam Speaker, because sports activities and these kind of things, as we talk about the difficulties we have trying to provide for our children and raise our kids in, in, in these times, sports is the answer for a lot of kids. So once again, in closing, I just want to thank the Guam Football Association for never stopping to increase and make the dream come alive for so many of our young people, and getting the resources from FIFA to fund these projects. I, I believe in the public hearing, we had high-level representation from FIFA, you know, to, to support this bill, saying that, you know, once they see this commitment from Guam, that the property is there, they will take care of the rest, and they will ensure that, that these fields are well-kept to the standards that they call for. And the partnership with the Department of Education cannot be understated as well, Madam Speaker. So Sisus Massey, once again, to rise in full support of 5136, and once again, thank the author, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to be a co-sponsor. Sisus Massey.
You're very welcome, Senator Chris Duñez. Anyone else I see? Senator Titegui, you may proceed on the main motion.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the opportunity. And I rise in full support of Bill 51. And I appreciate the efforts of the, of the branch of government, efforts of this branch of government to continue to make what we support when it comes to the support needed for public property for youth and the community in sports activities. Another piece of legis, legislation enacted only several months ago, Madam Speaker, was Public Law 35-135. It extends the Dedido and Aggett leases between the government of Guam and the Government Football Association. Bill 51 builds upon the work policymakers have put forward, including Bill 51, to build new and expanded existing facilities, including internationally-recognized playing fields, spectator seats, training, practice areas, and adequate parking spaces. Madam Speaker, I support Bill 51, because the Guam Football Association and the many families that make up the soccer community on Guam continue to invest their time, their energy, and resources to develop and grow, the growth of this sport. Bill 51 demonstrates that when a community such as ours work together to create new opportunities for our children and young adults to engage in positive and healthy activities, the return in our investment of public lands for community activity is beyond measurable. I support Bill 51 and encourage other sport, or, sports organizations that are serious about partnering with the government of Guam on the use of public lands, and to make their case so that policymakers may consider how to maximize limited public resources for the benefit of all families who call Guam home. Sisus Massey.
One, Pobetsu, Senator, and Titegui. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else? If not, oh, Vice Speaker Nelson, Majority Leader Nelson, I will recognize you at this time. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. I, I, I believe it is a good bill. I believe there are some, there were some questions that I had in this bill. However, the sponsor of the bill did work with Guam Department of Education to ensure that those concerns were mediated. And one of the concerns was on page five, lines 10 to 15, and it was the time allotted for GDOE to utilize the field with a minimum of three-week days, a week up to 4:30 p.m. And the, the sponsor of the bill did mention that they spoke with GDOE, stating that they did not need further use of the, of the field anytime after 4:30, or they have the avail, or they have the, they have the authority to negotiate a later time. And that was my concern, because usually, schools don't get out till 3:30, and it would be good for the students to, to be able to practice on these, you know, these pitch fields, and also that games occur during the weekend. And so just the level of caliber that, that the field could provide for, for their interscholastic play would be good to, to utilize during that time, during the weekends, and exceeding the time of 4:30. However, I was assured that it is a negotiable time with GFA. And so, you know, just to acknowledge that FIFA is a global entity, and they are receiving some funding in the presentation that was given to us at the public hearing from, from the COVID to help develop these, these fields. And just to, to know that FIFA also is a huge, is really a football organization for the entire, entire world. And the amount of money that comes through FIFA has to be considered, and the amount of resources that FIFA has, and also the amount of influence that this global organization has. And so this is a, a huge thing for our children, to be able to, to play on these high-level, uh, infrastructure turfs. And so that's a good thing. And so I want to thank the sponsor for this bill. I hope GDOE will maximize its use and improve on their interscholastic sports. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader Nelson. Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Speaker Therese, you may close on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to, before I proceed with closing, add another co-sponsor. That would be yourself, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, as a co-sponsor. That would be my motion.
Thank you. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing? None. Motion carries. Senator, I mean, Speaker Therese, you may proceed.
Thank you. I, I just want to point out also, so that those who are listening, who do not have the bill in front of them, are, are aware of what kind of obligations on both sides are going to be under this arrangement. One is that, of course, GFA, who is going to be doing the construction at their sole expense, is going to be responsible for all permits. And this is important in this area, because, you know, part of it, my understanding, you know, they have to go through historic preservation review, they're going to have to go through agriculture review, and they're going to have to go through EPA review, all of it. And so they, they have gone through a lot of it, in fact, and are, are trying very hard to get a building permit. But I just wanted to put that on the record, because that assured me also that there's no exception being made to them to get all of those clearances, and so that we don't have a adverse impact by this type of development in that area. Also, they were required to landscape the fields according to international standards, so that there's no, like, substandards going to be applied here. They are going to maintain these areas, including trash, dumping, anything else that might occur in these areas. Again, it's, you know, it's kind of in the back there where the school is. And as described earlier, it's surrounded by, you know, kind of forest area in the, behind that, and some, and of course, residential area. GDOE is going to be able to use the natural grass pitch area exclusively during normal school hours on no charge. GDOE is going to have keys to access these fields, and especially, they're going to be able to use them for emergency evacuations and other uses. GDOE is also going to be able to use the natural grass pitch area for interscholastic leagues, as described earlier by one of my colleagues, and that nothing, and we added that they, of course, charters, that GDOE would determine if charter schools would be able to use it. And so by GDOE, we, we've included not just Ordo Chalampago Elementary, but also Agoda Johnson, hopefully, that was what we discussed at the public hearing, and as GDOE sees fit to include other schools. And they will be able to negotiate additional usage of the fields, of course, and, and any other thing that they might need from GFA during this period. I want to commend GWA. They were pretty much the leading entity of this, because they had decided to subdivide their own parcel, you know, their own facility in this, in this, on this lot, from GDOEs. And they are undertaking the cost of the subdivision between them and GDOE. And that, and so this arrangement was made, oh, pretty much prior to even my knowledge, and they had talked about it for a long time. And the, come to an agreement, and then the, the GFA purchased adjacent property, because the facility expands beyond this piece that we are allowing them to use. Their facility will be much larger, and they just needed a, a, a small portion of the government of Guam land. Of course, I want to thank my colleagues who came to the public hearing, and those who participated in the discussion today. And I believe that this is, you know, public-private partnership that we've seen bring successes to Guam. And I'm not a soccer player myself, but I cannot help but to be in awe of those who are. And we have students who have so far excelled, and I'm so proud of them. One of them is the daughter of our colleague here, and they go to college. And they, they are, you know, representing Guam. And we are being represented in international leagues. And, and I just feel like the more we can do and expand this to all sports, we know we have the talent, and we just need to nurture that talent and, and to support it in every way we can. And so again, I thank my colleagues for their support of this. I thank these agencies for working together on behalf of the students of Guam. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
On the, on the motion to move, Madam Speaker? On the motion to move?
Yes, and I'd like to move the bill to third reading?
On the motion to move Bill Number 51-36 COR to the third reading voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing? None. Motion carries. We'll just take a very moment's recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to reconsider the actions of the body regarding Bill Number 94-36LS.
On the motion to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill Number 94-36LS. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are on Bill Number 94-36LS. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I like, I make the motion to amend, proffer an amendment. And what it, the amendment that I would like to proffer is to delete Section 4, the effective date, which currently states this act shall be effective one year after enactment. So by doing so, it ensures the effective date is upon enactment.
All right. This is a motion that is not in writing. It's to delete Section 4 of the bill, the effective date. Is there any objection to considering this motion without it being in writing? Seeing no objection. So on the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak on the motion to delete that section? Senator Perez, you are recognized. There's no one to speak on the motion, so you may close on the motion.
Okay. So yeah, the reason for this was, some of the discussion was that should we delay the effective date to one year, then the unintended consequence would be that perhaps Ethics Commission cannot move on developing the curriculum. And so we didn't want that unintended consequence to happen. And considering we did extend the implementation date from 18 to 36 months, that would compensate for the needed time. And so this would help with the implementation. So I thank my colleague for that suggestion. And I would like to move Bill 94-36 as amended to the third reading file.
On the motion, is there any objection to deletion of the section? Any? Hearing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, on the motion to place it in third reading? On the motion to place the bill in third reading, is there any objection? Hearing no objection, motion carries. I know. We are now on second reading still. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I'd like to make a motion that we go back to motions.
On the motion to return to motions, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are in motion. Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to append Resolution Number 72-36LS to today's session journal.
Do you have the title, Senator? Well, all right. If you could just tell us what it's about?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Resolution Number 72-36LS is relative to posthumously recognizing the late Honorable Joe Titanos Augustine, former Senator and Speaker, for the guidance and leadership he provided to our island. And to commemorate his lifetime of service to Guam and its people, and expressing condolences to his family on his passing on behalf of the people of Guam.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to amend, I mean to append Resolution Number 72-36LS to today's session journal, are there any objections? There are no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to resolve into the committee of the whole for the purpose of conducting the state funeral service for the late Honorable Joe Titanos Augustine, former Speaker, and to allow the honored guests into the Speaker Antonio R. Ampinko Legislative Session Hall upon resuming from our recess today until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning.
On the motion to resolve into the committee of the whole and to recess until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are recessed until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. Sijus Massey, colleagues.